How do we increase the sound on Saturday? I didn't hear anything, it just said.
Should be working. Go.
Ladies and gentlemen, join us virtually and those who are here with us. I will charge to apologize, we had some technical difficulties. Get through, so it's now seven thirty-six. So I'll be starting, before I begin, I just want to say, um, watch this. So I had seen this on Facebook the other day, International Spile Control Day, and read, don't be sad today. We all come in this world with chores, enjoy life, go sightseeing with these. I just have to believe in earlier than ours. I would like to believe I've tried hopefully successfully creating an atmosphere that is really where we are family. When he works for me, they work with me. Simply because we're always together. Two weeks ago, our family suffered a tragic loss as Andy Zoomus lost his courageous son. For hope, for those who not know, Andy was an exceptional inventor, his MBA, but more importantly, he kept the heart and soul of my work through. And that's what was happening in many years. Uh, as an April, right, a teacher named Mr. Gullum, to share or skew, depending on what he's saying, his philosophy is online. One of his shares was, in life, you will be Andy. People that may be different friends, but they are just acquaintances, close strangers. Andy was that type of individual that did feel like, through one conversation, that he knew rather, uh, just outgoing. Uh, his nature was to welcome everybody. It was, you went to the vet with Andy, and he was the first one to really come up to you and approach. So, um, more important than me, as the mayor of the village of New York, you know, there was so much of Andy's evil, so to speak. Uh, they say that the size of your funeral depends on the weather. And for those that attended Andy, Andy's funeral on Friday, or two Fridays ago. It was a rainy, cloudy day, cold, and the place, the church was packed. Alright, the place was packed, which I think just says a lot to, to the character of Andy Zoomus. Um, personally, I'll never understand why God takes people so much from our lives so early. My only answer is God needed advice, and he saw how Andy. Andy, I would say, is probably up there right now, smoking that soda, with the creator of all things in this world. Once again, he is giving sound advice to our mayor. Um, I want to thank that Zoomus and these two girls who share Andy with our community. And I certainly believe that Andy, in his time that I knew him, enriched all our lives. So with that, I would like everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance, and along the silence, I can Zoomus. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which rules its essence, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all. Alright, thank you. I will begin how I always begin, with, if I'm getting too hard to leave. Okay, I will begin like I always begin by introducing your village board of trustees, starting with the bar end, with James Farman. Next to him is Captain Mayor Rick Correll. Next to him is Trustee Subsariel. Next to him is Trustee Matt Fabro. Next to him, Gays Village Park, Jessica, Jessica McCann, and Cassie Todd. Whoop! And I am of course your, those who may have heard, Mr. Andrew Jackmott, which should get your life changed. Alright, we begin with a public hearing, order from the board request of the New York State Thruway Authority. This is a continuation of a public hearing, and I think all comments. I'm sure that they sound low. Okay. Uh, this is a continuation of a public hearing, and I think all comments on requests or review of all or whatever, on three, probably will be in three thirty-one, three four, three seventeen. Review is continued, and refer to the village engineers for comments. So that was received this afternoon. I don't know if any of the board members had questions on it? One, one question? Okay. Okay, let us know if the applicant present, and I'm assuming virtually.
Yes, yes, this is Patricia.
Okay, why don't you begin by just giving us an average version, since we reviewed this at the last meeting? Uh, what you're seeking, what you're exactly seeking, and why?
Okay, yes, um, I'm not sure, can you hear me pretty well, or?
Can you, yes.
Okay. Um, yes, we're, and I did submit, um, a supplement to our petition on February 2nd, and, um, have you received that?
Yes.
Okay, great.
We did receive that, yes.
Okay, very good, yeah, so we are seeking, um, and we, and we did appreciate, you know, the opportunity to speak with you all a couple of weeks ago, and our condolences, um, to your coworker, of course, um, and his family. So we are seeking, um, to, to essentially, you know, we're petitioning for a hardship waiver, um, to obtain potable water for our maintenance facility located in Harriman. And I, I think we went through the issues and our submission, um, and in our supplement, we wanted to clarify and actually amend, amend our petition, um, in response to several questions by the trustees and village. And I wanted to clarify, first of all, that we did an analysis of comparable authority maintenance facility water data for the year 2022. Um, and instead of, um, essentially, we, we have amended our petition, um, and are requesting approximately 2,000 gallons per day for drinking water, hand washing, showering, and truck washing of the facility, instead of our previous estimate of 5,000 to 7,000. Um, you know, we, and, you know, we, we went through this, yeah, we went through this in detail and wanted to make sure that, um, we were up to date on all of our numbers and things is most, you know, reflects our, um.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant board? Okay, go ahead Patricia, sorry.
Yeah, so, yeah, I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something, because I, it is a little, uh, scratchy. Um, so since the facility doesn't have a fire suppression system or sprinkler system, no additional water usage is anticipated, hydrant would be installed for emergency purposes. We, we, with regard to truck washing, um, we, residents asked for an estimate of water usage for truck washing, and essentially, um, we, we determined based on the, based on the water usage of, again, comparable facilities, that approximately 1,000 gallons per day would be required for truck washing. And primarily, truck washing is done during the winter months only, so water use would be just for a finite period of time, it's generally not done, um, for about three, three seasons of the year. Um, we do think that it could be separated from other wa, water usage at the facility. We would, um, need a pump, a holding tank for well water, a booster pump, um, and to provide pressure. Um, we don't believe that the non-potable water, um, could be used, it would have to still be disinfected prior to use due to water quality concerns, and to ensure the safety of the facility and employees and the environment, so we essentially would have to, um, disinfect this water for, for truck washing, you know? Although, it's feasible, it's not our preferable course of action due to our continued need to maintain and disinfect the system pumps and storage tank. We also wanted to just mention that, um, all other maintenance facilities in New York, in the, you know, for, for the Thruway Authority are connected to municipal water. Only one of them is not, that is the Berkshire facility, because it's not located near any available municipal water supply, and they use well water. But all of the others, all of our other, um, 20 do. We could do a flow test, we, we were poised to do that, but we haven't, we, um, we weren't permitted to do so in February 2022. And essentially, you know, we, we believe that this, you know, that with, that, you know, any type of agreement that we, we craft could easily be, um, done, you know, with, with agreement by the village and try to address any concerns you might have, you know, it's, obviously, you have the ability to, um, set, you know, essentially decide this on a case-by-case basis, where you find it an extraordinary hardship to demonstrate it. And we feel that, um, you know, the fact that we, you know, our facility has not had potable water for, you know, essentially since it's been in existence, other than through, you know, disinfection. We really, you know, would like to be treated similarly as other residents in the facility, in the, in the town, so, um, that's our, a supplement, we're happy to answer more questions, I'm not quite sure how well I'll be able to hear you, I think Todd Gold is on the phone, on the line also, but, um, we're happy to take back whatever questions you have and, and provide any additional answers.
Alright Patricia, thank you, any questions for Patricia before I go out?
I don't have any.
Nothing, or anything? Counsel, anyone waiting on you? Okay, we go to the public, public. Sorry, anybody who's on the phone, who's watching, or if you're in the room.
Chris Guadagnano Island Mills, I know I said some things last time, but two things have just popped up during this explanation. One, just beware, anybody who revises downward a calculation that drastically.
Louder.
Anybody who raises, lowers their consumption downward that drastically, once you give them the tap, there's no way to stop them, taking the original amount. It can't be stopped. So they could say they take a five hours a minute, they could take 5,000 once you give them the tap and give them some water, there's no way to stop them. So you have to be really, really sure of the destiny of water they are taking, wherever they consider this. And second, I still would strongly advise not, if you even want to consider this, do not let them tap off another customer. You're going to cause a huge amount of problems, and you're going to run it from a customer to another customer, and if there's a water quality issue or something else, this could get sticky in court. One of their own, single tap into your system, one customer, one line. So that would be my strong recommendation, is do not let them tap off another customer. Congratulations, thank you.
And you sir, anyone else who should speak on this? Okay, anyone joining us virtually? Mickey, you want to add anything, Mickey Phillips, what a superintendent?
Uh, the only thing I'd have to say is we're still waiting back from, uh, H2M on their comments on this, but probably five, six years ago, maybe a little longer, we had a discussion and a meeting with the Thruway at Village Hall, and we turned around, and, uh, at that point in time, I think they were denied. Uh, I wasn't in charge at the time.
Okay Mickey, thank you, anyone else who's joined us virtually who should speak on this matter? Speak now, for our holder piece.
Yeah, can I, this is Patty DeNeuer, again, I'd like to just respond, um, to the first speaker, and that is that, um, you know, we did, we did this analysis, and, um, I, I don't, I, you know, one of the individuals who helped work on the initial analysis, um, has retired. Um, we went back, reevaluated all of the figures, um, and I think in our attached, in our supplement, there is an attachment, and you'll see six comparable facilities, Newburgh, Kingston, Verona, Manchester, Henrietta, and Silver Creek. All of these facilities are comparable to Harriman. Um, each of these has a daily average significantly higher than we are actually even requesting, or, um, lower than we're requesting. So if you'll see, their daily averages really are closer to 1,000 gallons, um, a day, with the highest being 1,860 per day. Um, so it's important to kind of note that we wanted to compare apples to apples, these are not divisioned offices and maintenance facilities like Albany and, uh, New York Division. These are smaller, um, smaller facilities like Harriman, um, and I think honestly, our figures were just wrong. Um, and I, I don't anticipate, based on, but, on these figures, that there'd be any, anything higher than 2,000 a day. Now, as you say, sure, there's some possible aberration, but, um, I think it's really important to reflect that, you know, we put this down in our supplement, we corrected the record. Um, that 5,000 to 7,000 number was, was wrong. Um, it was, um, and I, I, it was, it's really important to get that point across, that, um, these comparable facilities are really, what were you, you know, the information that we're using, so, um, we have corrected the record.
Okay, thank you Patricia, anyone else virtually who's joined us? Alright, hearing all the comments, can I have motion in a second to close the public hearing?
Okay. Is there any issue with, like, basically, somebody's selling all water?
Yes, there's an issue with that.
Because like, we're, it's going to the commons, and the commons is basically reselling the water to them, is that right?
Well, the way that they're putting it, it's not that so much that they're selling it, they're basically treating it like another tenant, so that tenant would have to pay that amount. So it's not like they're selling it, the way it's put forward, but it's like, um, I'm just regretting how I said this, you know, again, that it's another tap into another tap that's already there, rather than a work connection. That's, yeah. I, I'm not sure that the comments were provided to Mickey, that they did comment at the end of the day, maybe did get comments from H2M, and I think those are important for the board to consider. That, in summary, what they said is, there's several issues that the board should consider resolving prior to considering any connection. Um, include feasibility testing, design plans, agreements and approvals, which I think actually go straight to what your question is, what is the design, how it's going to happen, and orderly agreements are going to be.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, questions from the board to, uh, council? No? Okay. So, what is the board's pleasure at this time? Uh, you mean motion then? Okay, can I motion then?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? To be opposed? Okay. Now, let me, let's see what the board's pleasure is. So, I don't think anyone wants to make a motion to allow or deny the way we request. Go ahead, Mr. Trustee Farman.
Uh, I'd like to process my, my resolution and my comments on the fact that I'm very sensitive to the issue of water consumption. Uh, but I also feel that we have about 30 people at work here, they have a valid reason for getting water, like, cleaning Pablo off. Uh, but I review the amended use judgment, I take issue with the requirement, uh, that processed water also needs to be treated through the health records. It's not how treated in the facility, it's making good flow rates on health service of the cap. And secondly, in order to limit the impact on the limited ability of water resource, I would approve requesting to leave the moratorium on service connections. Requested for Pablo water service only, with the following specific requirements to protect it. Probably parallel with the change to that. Uh, the first thing, the Pablo water system should be physically separated and is air-gapped from all process and maintenance water services. Secondly, the service line connection will be sized to, and it is restricted to fixture cap. Uh, sinks shall approach non-use at the facility. Third, the service will be fitted with a separate meter accessible to the village for monitoring purposes, but that Litbury Commons will be responsible at their meter service to send water. The water fork of service line will include an RPC at a point of injury to the seaway facility, available by, or inspection by the village. If the Thruway will install their expensive crystallized water storage tanks sufficient to meet the process water flows. And then finally, the Thruway and Litbury Commons management ownership enter into a binding agreement satisfying to the deal of returning to whole village harmless as to propose non-public service extension. That's my motion.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion? Okay, I have a second. Okay, do you want to motion to deny the request? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, um, one thing, if, if, and that is, for the board to close the public hearing, under your resolution, they grant the exemption to moratorium. You have 30 days within which to make a decision, if you don't make one tonight, um, or such further time as the board trustees need to act with the assembly.
Do you want to? I have time to review H2M's comments.
H2M's comments, or if you needed further information, or if you were considering something, you want to see something further today. I'm just giving you what's the option.
So does the board, just, I'm going to tap there, does the board want to continue to keep the public hearing open, or you want to just settle this down?
The, the public hearings are.
I close, I'm not talking that off.
Your, your.
Because we can hold this long, thanks to you, everything. You're good, is that?
I'm good.
Okay, Jamie, I know you just spoke, make it, I'm good, okay? So, that being said, I don't have a second on Jamie's motion, so can I then have a motion in a second to deny the wait for request from the New York State Thruway, sorry?
Motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second it, all, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, go ahead.
Trustee Farman?
No.
Trustee Farman?
This is for the deny, okay?
What's that?
This is for the deny, yeah, I go for the deny, yes.
Trustee Farman? Trustee Farman?
Yes.
Alright. Thank you Patricia. Alright, public comments on January 11th, the agenda is in the back of the room. Uh, anything on the agenda, if you wish to speak on, speak now for our holder piece. If anyone is here, uh, we'll start with those that are here at the root wall. If you're ready to vote. One, virtually, if you should speak on the January 11th. One, going twice. Alright. Seven minutes, can I have a motion in a second to set the two minutes to meeting held on January 11th?
You vote.
You're there. Do I have a second? Second, my trustee Fabro. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have two abstracts to approve. Approve of abstract, abstract 15, the Litbury Department, and we'll be reading abstracts.
Abstract 15, 23241844, through 23241909, and total of 200, 24,526 dollars, and we'll be post-acts.
Right, and I have a motion in a second to approve abstract 15, as read.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mark McLean, once again, you're on.
Abstract 16, contains abstract 23241909, through 2324238, and total of 1,332,315,000 dollars, and one second.
The Vegas. Can I have a motion in a second to approve abstract 16, as read?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Uh, give it to the new guy, give it to Trustee Farman. Uh, any discussion on abstract 16? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you've met with a previously exempted properties, okay? Can I motion in a second to adopt our own resolution as presented, so we let the authority tax amount of these properties located in their locations that were previously seen eligible for possession?
Motion.
I'll second it. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Resignation, okay, can I have a motion in a second to step up progress, progress, the resignation of M.D.R. Cleveland Marrey on the highway law effective February 2nd, 2024? Motion. Trustee Farman, seconded by Trustee Correlli. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
On behalf of the village of New York, I wish, I wish the next meeting, the managers, to get a decentest, and wish them all the best next future, and that's all. Okay, uh, moving on, I have no business, no, no old business associated, so I will move right on to new business. So introductory local law 1 of 2024 tax cap override. So this is a yearly, we try every season. So, can I have a motion in a second to introduce local law 1 of 2024 type of tax cap override? So override tax, whether the board is believed to be on board, but if it establishes a general municipal laws, section 3 dash C, if necessary. And if necessary, the board. Can I get a motion on that, please?
I'm going to vote.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Discussion, sure. Go for it.
I believe that it's premature to, um, institute this, we're five months away from budget, we've got a much better idea of whether this is going to be practical necessity, we should put it off on purpose. Budget at least, ordinary budgets, uh, available for review.
Village Attorney, would you like to speak on it back?
My only correction is that budget process starting yesterday, which we want to stay off, so we're not five months away, I'm sorry to tell you that that's not accurate. Um, budget estimates went up to your department heads yesterday, February 8th, which is when it's required to stay off, they do that to me by March 1st. And we'll be starting a budget review in March, and your budget carrying fee for a meeting, which is required by law, a full public hearing by April 15th of each year. So five months is not accurate, it was longer.
I excuse you, at this point, we haven't seen any disinformation, I don't think at this point we should be thinking that we're going to have to move to a, another taxing increase. I, that's my opinion.
I think, I would love that to be accurate, that's why the mayor said if necessary, we should though waive the state legislator adopting the tax cap override procedure. You have to have the tax cap law in place, adopted, and filed with the section. Attorney of state, before it goes on, I'm not sure.
My point again, I think it's premature to start reviewing local law override tax.
We are only introducing this, this is not us approving this by this evening, but we are introducing this, so I would like to remove this law, so do I have a motion in a second to introduce local law 1 of 2024?
We have that in the beginning, and on the last.
Okay. Okay, so James, we're going to do it all in favor, and we can certainly go down on that, so, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Do I have to be voting opposed?
I don't know.
Okay, over again. Okay, just want to say this local law requires no secret action, no more any referrals, okay? So can I have a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing to be held on March, March 14th? 2024, 7:30 PM, and I think in public comments, on introductory local law 1 of 2023, type of tax cap override. Twenty twenty four, seven thirty PM, and any public comments on introductory local law one of twenty twenty three, how to the tax cap override? I'll make the motion.
Awesome.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Any votes?
Good, alright. Next up, introductory. I have a drink here, and it's, we're thinking it's out of our mind, so the way my mouth is, it's just a little bit. Okay, this is about the local law two of twenty twenty four, right of entry. And I have a motion in a second to introduce, introductory local law two of twenty twenty four, entitled right of entry. Purposes of this local law is to ensure that chapter three ten is only the village of Woodbury is allowed for the right of entry by a co-registered officer to be forced to New York State law.
Motion.
I guess I'll second it?
Sure.
There you go. Uh, all in favor, discussion?
Discussion, yes. I believe that the, the two previous introductions of this potential law, I objected principally to the naming of the law. Since the village does not have a chamber on private property. Except in the small print in the new law. That we have to go through New York State procedures. I believe in New York State procedures are properly identified in this law, except for two items. One, the person, in order to have permission, it has to be an adult at the present, to grant permission. The, uh, the second part of this is that the important part of this law is to ensure that the building department understands the requirements for probable cause. You don't address that at all in this law. This law actually is a directive to the building department on the process of obtaining access. In that it should be so named and the other changes made in the text before it's introduced, uh, to the public. I would also like to just mention that with fourth amendment of the constitution says each man's home is a castle, secure from unreasonable searches and seizures of property at government. It protects against arbitrary arrests, and is the basis of law regarding search warrants, stop and press, safety inspections, wire caps, and other forms available, as well as central community and other criminal law topics. The privacy of law. The right of people to be securing their personal houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated. No warrants shall issued upon probable cause supported by no confirmation, particularly describing the place to be searched and the personal things to be seized. Would you like to comment on that?
Just a couple things, this is, this is the first time this law being introduced by the board, they have considered a court with a suggestion by the building. Uh, probable cause is not defined here, and that does change with case law. Um, there's no specific definition. This law actually puts into text in your code what the law is in state.
Okay. Any other questions for council? So. Okay, so can I have a motion in a second? Can I have all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Jamie, uh, James?
No.
Now, for the record, once again, I would say there is no super action required for this local law. Uh, can I have a motion in a second to have a required introductory local law two, the right of entry to the Woodbury planning board, the Woodbury building department, and the large town planning board? I'll make the same motion.
Second.
Second. All, uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Now, can I have a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing to be held at seven thirty PM on watch fourteen? Before we have any public comments on introductory local law two of twenty twenty four?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye. This is my statement. Yes, sir.
Trusty Farrow?
No.
Okay. Alright, scheduled public hearing, moratorium radio request. So can I have a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing for the Woodbury Banker? For moratorium radio request at seven thirty to twenty five? This meeting, now the last for February twenty second. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, there you go. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, that ends regular business of the village of Woodbury. It makes it hard to hear. Alright, that means I will give out a couple comments. Starting from the back of the room. Starting with those in present, if anybody wishes to speak, speak down or hold your peace. Actually, you know what I'll do, I'll start first, but when you guys get your, your ass together, okay? You guys, so, you, those of you who talk to us yourselves and decide who wants to speak, okay? In the meantime, in the meantime, anybody that enjoyed this virtually, if you wish to speak on anything, now would be your opportunity. So hit the little hand wave button, Vic Correll will point it out to me, and, and then we'll go and, and follow.
Mr. Better? I'm not looking at the zoom.
Oh!
That's right.
That's right. So hopefully those that are here that are present have spoken amongst themselves and have decided who is going to speak. Remember, some reason to help us, some reason to acknowledge.
Do you hear pressure on my board?
Are you still over there?
Uh, I'm serious though, um, I could go and support personally send to them and her family. I couldn't be here, I was out of state, so I'm glad that the community came together on Thursday night and Friday, so thank you to everybody in the community and the board that supported the families. On another note, certification committee, we had a meeting.
Thursday?
Thursday, oh, that, we had, I forget, I've had so many meetings this week. Um, Lisa Marie came to our meeting, we're working out some projects, I know she's been talking to the board about it, so I am happy, my committee is very grateful that we can work together, so that's it.
Thank you Maria. I guess you're up.
Too well.
Yes, she, she, she laid it out, now is your time to speak.
Alright, well, no. Lisa, it's.
We do not.
Actually, um, again, the moment of sadness for Andy and his family, very much appreciated. Because we will miss him dearly. Um, so I, it's been a while since I approached the board, and thank you everybody, and we, uh, Reese Cost America took over.
That's great.
For a while, so just a really quick cap on that, we late, uh, over eight hundred and twenty weeks, so I want to thank Woodbury because without everybody's support, um, we can't, it's not a one-person show, it's a village. So, uh, thank you for that. We are doing recent retirement on Saturday. There will be a small little get-together for our local veterans, any veteran is welcome to come out at ten o'clock. I'm hoping to get boy scouts, girl scouts, local youth to come sit, chat a little bit, and then we'll go clean out the wreaths. Um, and then, now, we're full steam ahead of this climate smart, so I just wanted to give a quick update to everybody. We've got a lot going on. Sorry. You took a number from me, didn't you? Yeah, yeah, sorry. Uh, it's been a while, so I'll just catch it up. Number one, uh, the village has met its criteria for nicertic grants, so that is a five thousand dollar grant. Did not realize it required a letter of, well, accepted, I think.
We rehearsed it today.
Letter.
We don't want your money, we don't have to say that.
A little while ago. But anyway, so we have to say yes, we want it, and so we put this application with a letter that said, yes, we want it. And, and this is how we're going to use it, so that letter has gone through. Um, so, once that's approved, uh, we should be receiving five thousand dollars. We did have to let them know what the five thousand dollars spent on, and we're going to continue with some of our projects, one means tree planting.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, at the end of the table, just, well, at least you speak.
I can talk louder.
I know you can, okay, you know what makes it more difficult, when it's those guys.
Got it, so part of our, we're going to continue with what we started, which is our tree planting, our New York State native tree planting. Um, this year, we are hoping to work the parks department and place one at the, uh, what's the name of it? The Mills Library, because we're hoping to review. Uh, Arbor Day, or actually Arbor Day is Friday of twenty sixth of April, we're going to do it Saturday, the twenty seventh of April. Uh, we're also hoping to do our native tree giveaway, like we did last year, the little bear group's native tree giveaway. Also to take place or start on April twenty seventh at the Mills Library. We're collaborating again this year with the library services to do that birthday with kids in the Hudson Valley Library. Um, part of what we would like to use the nicertic grant for is education. It's a campaign that nicertic gives us additional money for if we promote solar, electric vehicles, and heating and cooling, uh, halls. So every time somebody in Woodbury purchases one, we keep a tally. Five, between five to ten purchases of any of these items brings us more grand money. So we signed up for that campaign, we leave some of the grand money to promote these items. Um, last Saturday, we ran collaboration with Parks on Four H for our birthday, this is last birthday, we've got to develop a ten point use. And the more we communicate our new environmental issues, the better we all are. Uh, we are continuing to work with the Hudson Valley Pollinator Project, we're going to, uh, start a garden at the Osborna Building, hopefully. I reached out to Bobby to coordinate with him. Again, I approached Maria with, uh, we originally wanted to do a pollinator garden at the Mills Library, it was as soon as we walked in, there's that little loose line behind it, pollinator native plants. Uh, they directed us over to a pollinator garden that is at the Red, so I do have to bring that to my door, because that's really important for our bottom line, so I'll make sure they're working with that. Uh, we are also, April thirteenth, we're hosting another repair cafe here at Village Hall. So we have woodworkers, new woodworkers. Um, so if you've got broken items, please consider instead of throwing them out, bring them here, we have a gentleman that has, uh, mad electrical skills. And we have a woodworker, but we've got children repair, we've got a seamstress coming, so instead of throwing the items out, bring them here, let these people see if they can repair them, they're chanting at, but it's for a minimal fee, we just replace the custom supplies, so basically free. And then, lastly, we are hoping to celebrate Environmental Day on June first, location and more events to come. So thank you for your.
Do you want to go do that outdoor as you were, or you want to be, uh, private?
Um. Not sure.
Okay, don't panic, we have time for all these.
We, we started doing Earth Day, which was a disaster for us, we jumped to environment.
I just did with the grant, just make sure you get the village pressure for a paid work to have, okay? On the, on the grant, I don't think it was much to submit to us, so that we're in the loop with the grant, correct?
Oh, yeah, so that, that, so that's submitted and the check comes to you.
Okay, yeah, sorry, do you need anything else as a treasure?
I need the actual grant paperwork, and somebody sent a letter to them accepting it, and the study that is signed by their chief of.
Yes, yeah, we, we.
Okay, there, alright, so yeah, any, any, because any grant paperwork has a permanent retention under the New York State Archives record protection schedule.
A couple of sort of grants, that's going forward, maybe more like a status letter.
Or any correspondence to.
Thank you Lisa. Alright, anyone else to speak here?
Just some information.
You gotta go over there, you gotta tell us your names, social security number, background information, so we have to tell them. All in favor?
There, Mrs. Vera, resident of Pineville, Elsira. Uh, so on the local law two, I wondered, can you just, uh, say a one-on-one with, or tell me where I can deep dive and find out more? Uh, here.
Look at the red under, just, so all the information, right? There you go.
Thanks.
Have you seen it? You pay, you pay your attorney by the, by the court, by the, she speaks, so you just say this is all of the money. Thank you. Anyone else?
Jimmy, I have the bills, so I'll just give you a second to, to, one minute. I come from the city, I come from Queens, you know, like city where you don't know nobody. Small town, you know what, I know there, I know the board, you know what, I got, I'm a builder, I can do a lot, that's very, I mean, issue. And you meet a lot of people, you know what, Maria, information, it's like, you know, I call me Jay's darling. I didn't know her, that, I, I saw it, seen the outpouring on, on Facebook and everywhere else. And, and I regret I did not have a chance to meet her, and I feel like I missed out on something. Um. I want to point out that, uh, Grandma Maggie, they're open, get us to the floor. Um, so that's, that's a good thing. So here's my issue. First off is, when the board speaks, my hearing is terrible. So when you don't speak up, I have a hard time with it. So.
Jimmy, that sound advice.
I mean, yeah, I, I'll go to you now.
Or I can do this, Jimmy, that sound advice!
Thank you very much. Um, so here it is. I started attending meetings, the town meetings, angel meetings, get involved. And it's easy to, to get up there and talk about anything, but sometimes there's no class. And sometimes not going to say something that turns you off. So starting election time and everything else, you start seeing, you know, just, you know, all the political areas. But this board, since you guys are taking seats, this is second meeting, I believe.
Second meeting.
Well, when we watch the board, or when we sit here, you work for us, but we count on you. And I love it when a board, doesn't know, I love it when we bounce ideas off each other. I mean, there's several issues where you guys disagree, but we can't disagree on everything. Appearance sakes, for anybody in the public watching, it's like, the board is dysfunctional. James, I don't get it. I understand this point of making up. You know what, the mayor's wrong, somebody's wrong, I understand asking the question, but me, I don't know as much as you, I have not lived here as long as you, but I'm just wondering. Are you trying to tell me the rest of the board is always wrong? Kelly's always wrong? Because that's what's interesting to me, and I'm just having a hard time with being comfortable, being. Because it doesn't make sense to me. I don't want kumbaya, I don't want Igo bolts, you don't want Father and Little, because the answer could be wrong. But, it's a lay on this, it's, it's a question here, it's a debate only here, and as a member of the board, maybe it's just me. I don't feel good here. It's a, you know what, you guys get in a room, work yourselves out, and then invite the public in. Because the, the public, it's to me, it's like, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering what's going on. I didn't, I didn't see this elsewhere, I understand that feeling, all. I didn't, I didn't see this elsewhere. I didn't see it in that meeting at all in the past, but this is just weird to me. I mean, if I'm out of line, tell me, but it's just, it's, it's, it's board after board meeting, and it's, 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 it's just a couple of comments were made even before we got here. I mean, the one comment that really bored me, and I understand your position, because I'm for us in position. You can't position. The moment before you sat down, you asked that maybe those moments until the next four months. James, if I was a board, I would have got in your face. What are you talking about? That is the most insulting thing I've ever heard. Whether it was, whether it was terrorist seeking or whoever else, they were elected to represent the people. They weren't being jugs on that ass meeting. You know, you got voted in. You know, congratulations, that guy voted in. But to me, that comment that, you know, it's a, even before we came in, it was, it was you and everyone else. And is there a reason for this? I mean, when you hear, when you're the troubleshooter, come in and shake off this board, they're not always fine. I get it, but they try. It's, it's, instead of, instead of like standing out, work with them. Because that's the whole thing. Since that election, everyone's turned out. Everyone's trying to work together. That's what we heard so much, to work together. And if you can't even work together in this room, how the hell is, and can we expect everyone to work together with the town and everyone else? I'm nervous, okay? There's a lot of things going on here. And it is, maybe this, I'm not gonna say conflict, but this constant mild disagreement. Every meeting, every issue, and, you know, I just don't get it. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Anyone else joining us?
And we're here in just five minutes. Terror beer essential, but.
Thank you, Sarah.
So I have, I have a lot to say. I don't know how much detail I'm going to get into. I will start with Jimmy's comments, because I tend to agree with them. CJ and I have sat on this board for four years, right? We never agreed. We disagreed, always respectfully, always publicly. We always made valid comments. We always get our homework. And we've proven wrong with facts. We often would reconsider our plans. What I see here, even when given facts, we still pursue forward with our opinion, that's dangerous, very dangerous. The tax cap override, voting no to that is the most dangerous thing you can do as a first-year trustee, not on what's a convention to these. These department heads and Desiree will come at you with all the detail in the world, all the facts in the world, to back up what you need to approve a responsible budget. I don't care what campaign promises you will make. Responsible budget to maintain the services that we provide for the citizens of this, this community. To vote no without having fact, I, I don't have words for that right now, other than irresponsible. I'll start with that. If you are presented with an issue, which you often are during budget season, that you're un, it's not known at the time, or historical, objecting forward, and might have Mickey come to you and say, hey, this issue just came up. That wasn't budgeted for last year. We foresee it in the coming year. What are you going to say? No? Because I made promises that I'm not going to go with a ridiculously low unsustainable tax cap? It's unsustainable. You have people in the Senate and, and the House that would say that. It is unsustainable. That's why there's such a law. So to not pass it because you made a promise, to me, I, I think that's, that's just not okay. That's first. Second, you have some of the hardest-working department heads in, in any municipality. Um, I watch lots of different board meetings. I've listened to department head comments at different board meetings. I've worked with these fine individuals for four years. To continuously accuse of wrongdoing is demoralizing to any employee. And I can tell you from working directly with Jessica and with Desiree in the capacity of village and assistant village clerk over the years, that many village clerk, excuse me, over the years, any questions we have always had or met with factual responses was a what. It wasn't, this is what I think. It was, this is what we've always done, and here's the backup to prove why. Even if there was no backup, the backup was found by Kelly or by our engineers. It was never, let's go to an outside party and accuse our board of doing something improper. The level of distrust that then creates is irreversible. And I'm sorry, that's not why you're all elected. You're elected to service the taxpayers of this community, not to prove each other wrong, not to point fingers. You won the election. Do us proud. There's no ego here. There's nothing, there's nothing to prove, other than if you see an issue, fix it. Don't point fingers and say, this is improper. This is citing law, which doesn't apply to the situation at the end, even when polls doesn't apply. Again, we insist forward. That I will never understand. The last thing I want to say is that we have, I said this earlier in my board comments, the best land use attorney in Orange County. It is undeniable. Go talk to somebody who wrote boards in different municipalities. Go talk to, to Ruins, or go talk to Monroe. They will tell you that this, we are lucky to have her in our corner. And I didn't say anything at the first meeting, but voting no to Kelly wanting out of village attorney is this, is confusion, is not understanding the magnitude of the issues this woman has helped us with and resolve. The plethora of history she and her firm have for the villages we're bearing here. If you don't agree with some of her advice, that's fine. You're not going to find better than her or your own. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time. I want to.
Anyone else?
Someone is here in Marson.
Did you hear anything?
I'm starting to move on. I was just nodding. That's what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, anyone else called for once more, or wants to.
Yeah, I'm not there.
Okay. You go, I'm so ready to be, we're going to be board comments. No, we're not comments. Well, why are you here with us?
I just wanted to thank Steve Ray, personally used to service the Bible Department. Uh, Steve's decided to move on to different, different things now, so I, I just wish him the best and, uh, I hope he's very successful with it.
That's it? There was no, like, stop. Was it just me? Did you see the, alright, thank you, Bob. Uh, Mickey Phillips, you're up, buddy.
I have nothing, sir.
Alright, Mickey, why don't you just give us, is there any news on the well?
Yes, well, well, the, uh, the pipe work has been, the conduit has been put in. Within the last week or two, they put the fence around the wellhead itself. The electric, electricians are down there now, taking out all the old stuff that we don't need. And we're gonna try to allocate it somewhere else. And we're just waiting on some new parts to come in, so they can start putting all the electric work inside the building for the new well.
So just for the board, what they're trying to do is get every other bit of minutia done, so that when the parts do finally come in, it's, it'll make our lives much easier, correct, Mickey?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a new ETA for parts, or can we get an ETA for parts?
Uh, they should be here by the end of the month. And we're still, you guys just gotta remember, once this is all done and we get this running, we still have to test for PFOS, PFOAs. And that could be six to eight weeks after we test the result.
Okay.
So we're still in the spring.
Okay. Parts are holding us up, so if we're, they're coming, that, at least everything else is coming forward.
Uh, Lucy, while I got you, is there any news in the community project?
Uh, no. We're still waiting for the, uh, warmer weather, which is falsely here, but it's gonna get colder sooner or later, so, uh, that is ordered. We're just waiting for it to come in, then they can start putting that project together.
Thank you, Mickey.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mike Fennella?
Good evening, Mayor. I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Alright, moving on to other comments. Mr. Friday, you're first. Yes, oh, that's right, village treasure. That's right. I was told you, that's where it's planning.
That's okay. I just forgot that was a part of the.
We're just gonna play the, the, the whole set, one, the word music. Every time we get into.
I, I wanna also, uh, piggyback on Mr. Andrew's comments that you had, really unique project. It's really hard to hear, not you, you're, you're, you're loud enough. The rest of you, it's kind of hard to hear when you're speaking. So if you can maybe speak up, I need to tell the previous board this too, so it's constantly, it's just hard to hear, especially over here. Um, especially if you don't even say aye or nay. I'm sure the villagers will appreciate that, knowing who's voting now. I wanted to chat out your comments. It's very appreciated. And I want to thank, uh, Lisa for being a volunteer, a volunteer community with no political aspirations or. Your volunteer community is actually about your community, not stride, anything else.
And gets things done.
Yes, so thank you, Lisa, for doing the work.
That's it? That's it? That's all? You're good?
All, all good. Do we need that rock again?
I, I did, I just want to say for record that La Laani is the greatest highway superintendent in Norah County. Uh, maybe you're out. You can take a bow at any moment, and also, I, um, I just want to apologize because I was dead. And now I'm having the rose petals of Bill Robb's tea in the room. I will make up to them at the next meeting. We'll get red and white roses to you, Bob. There you go. Thank you. That's so embarrassing.
Oh, you got it then?
Okay, Trustee Friday, you're up first.
The items to, uh, raise, uh, I think the first thing was the Cornwall, uh, planning board, uh, request for comments on the warehouse, um, proposal in Cornwall, and its potential impact on bypassing, bypass truck prep. Uh, since the route to the warehouse is much shorter, if they go down, uh, through the road and Smithville Road. Uh, I think we should make a, we should have a formal resolution by the board, uh, to respond to that and point out those deficiencies.
No, but that, that I've already talked to, I've talked to. Okay, I, um, uh, Trustee Bauer and I spoke about this the second, uh, Trustee Bauer and I, plus, uh, village planning board chairman Chris Burrow, were all at the tree top meeting at the town board house. So we all spoke. Uh, Trustee Bauer did reach out to me in terms of what can we do. And I did speak to, uh, Chris Burrow once again. These are illustrious planning board chairman. What we are going to do is talk to our, uh, build our, link or our traffic consultant, okay, and address it for those reasons. Apparently, the shortest route to this tree top development, this warehouse, is through, right off of, right off of the, uh, Route eight, uh, eighty-seven, right off to Route thirty-two, and then we're even on the cup of Smithville Road, or over the trail. So what I am going to do is have, and we have. That comments due by the sixteenth. So this is the best way for the village to address it, for the village's residents' concerns. Because once we do submit something, it has to be, it will be entered in with DEIS, and then they have to respond to the applicant to what we have submitted. So the, the village of Woodbury, on behalf of its residents, these things will be addressed by the application. So what we will do, and I will talk to, with the county law enforcement, to, 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 uh, the board, the planning board of Cornwall.
Yeah, I would suggest, um, along with the line, uh, that Trustee Friday and Jessica talked about, and that you, Trustee Bauer did, I would suggest a motion to authorize the drafting of the letter responding to the DEIS to raise the vote in traffic.
Okay.
And that would be only been approved by, by, at least the, on the, there to be done.
So, Trustee Friday, your motion, as I was gonna say, Trustee Bauer with the second, more in favor, and I, I, it goes. Let's get it done.
The next item I have here is the IMA, uh, I'd like to propose that we create a working group of two trustees to meet with two of the town board members to review the status of the IMA and to identify areas of, uh, agreements, so that we can move towards, uh, reviewing that agreement.
Talking about taking it in, what else? Is that it?
Uh, no. The, this week, uh, we got the information, including the agenda, uh, essentially twenty-four hours before the meeting. Uh, I would like to amend the January eleventh, uh, approval of the standard procedures for that, so that the meeting notices are posted and made available five days before the meeting, essentially Friday before the meeting. And that the, uh, seventy-two hour notice be provided for posting the materials and the website connection for the Zoom meeting, uh, essentially on Monday before we, that's the motion.
Okay, well, we essentially got the, you have the agenda almost forty, over forty-eight hours before the meeting. And we have a general historically produced, or I've sent out the agenda either Monday, Tuesday, Friday, and we have never had problems like that. And quite honestly, the two trustees that were both on board have had an issue in that matter in terms of the timeframe, in terms of looking over the abstract, maybe any, any of the vouchers signed, uh, I have never had this problem. The two trustees both had careers and children, and everything sold out of them. So I don't know, have forty-eight hours is not enough to this. We get through this, through the, uh, the, uh, re-awking. So I don't know why it's coming up now. It should've came up, should've came up during the meeting.
Quite frankly, it should've. I missed those, those times that we were dealing with some other things in the meeting. But at this point, it's not fair to the public to have them guess what's going to happen at the meeting, even though it was the calendar. Of all the meetings, the public should have an idea of what's going to be discussed at the meeting by posting the agenda and also by having the Zoom information and any materials available online, uh, seventy-two hours.
Well, I gotta be honest with you. I kind of take offense to that, because I, I think that what we do here in the village order is, is quite transparent. The agendas we're posting, I post them on social media, anywhere you can find it. Um, we do, there are very few municipalities that have been meetings this way. This was something that Trustee Graciela, who I've talked to, brought to the table, and made the battle. I couldn't be more transparent with what we do. Um, producing the agenda, pulling it out in advance, I also posted it on social media, and that we do can share around all over the place. I, I don't know how else to bring more people into this room, other than trying to offer snacks and beverages and whatnot, so.
Maybe.
Yeah, damage. I ask, every meeting, we make a very damage, and that's simple to say. So I honestly don't see what else I could possibly do. Um, the agenda is put together. Normally, I try to have it out by Monday, but quite honestly, this is, is a part-time position. That's not a part-time position. So I also have a wife, four kids, three dogs, two cats, and two different companies that I run. So. I don't know.
Before we get set, Mr. Friday, does he make his motion?
I don't. It's the S for second.
Okay, can we have a second and then?
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Now, James, uh, Matt can speak.
I think there's some discrepancies between different interpretations of the open meetings law here. And, um, you know, on one hand, we have one group of people telling us there's a twenty-four hour requirement for the documents, but per the meetings law in NICOM, there's a seventy-two hour limit that we have to have meetings done, these documents by, the agenda posted. On top of that, it specifically states in the NICOM guide that since we have Zoom meetings, that that twenty-four hour limit doesn't apply. That's just my interpretation, but of course, that is...
Yeah, if, if I can, we, the NICOM handbook that goes out to elected officials, we all have a copy of it. There is a section in there that deals specifically with agendas, and you'll notice that in that section, there's no quote on it. And that's because those are religious suggestions, that those are not part of the law. What the law actually says is that agency records are supposed to be available to the public that are going to be subject to discussion. During open meetings, they have to make it available to the extent practical, at least twenty-four hours in advance. And the reason for that is, as we've all seen, whether this sitting board or prior sitting board, things must have been left in. And there are deadlines that you need to be, so even if you have an agenda posted ten days before your meeting, that is not gonna be the agenda that you're gonna be dealing with that.
Right.
So just as a, as a tip, you also wanna make sure that what's up there is leading the public in the right direction, and it is as thorough and correct as it can be when somebody goes to pull it off line. So if they pulled off line ten days early, and they're like, oh, good, I've got an agenda. But two days before you update it, and it's a ten-hour thing, you just wanna make sure that you give everybody the most correct, thorough information you can.
Point taken, but...
That's my only thing, I just want to...
We're happy for seventy-two hours, not ten days.
I, I was just giving a dramatic example to make a point. I, the, the word precision on that policy, I just wanted to clarify what the...
Does a law require an agenda to be used, by me?
Uh, no, that can actually be made at the meeting and can change that. Or you can post one and have a supplemental agenda as well.
And so we are vulnerable.
You are vulnerable, yeah. I think there's just a request for a change in, in your policy.
Okay. So I have a motion to the second on the floor.
Is it for five days, if it's for something to go initially, it's five days?
It was for agendas, if I'm correct, you're wrong, for agendas five days before and seventy-two hours in advance, the posting of materials on the... I think that's where it's at.
Yes. I have a motion to the second. All in favor? Aye. All right. All opposed? Nay, nent?
I'm both nay. I'm, I'm okay with the way it is, I don't, nobody else has ever complained about it.
In agenda, in the agenda?
I actually also, because I knew this was gonna come up, I actually went to different municipalities and asked them what they did locally. Uh, Monoda's twenty-four hours. Uh, it's all over the place, so, Monoda's twenty-four hours, Harriman does by closing business Friday, or Tuesday meeting, Cornwall does by closing business Friday for a Monday meeting. Uh, Tuxedo Park does Friday from Wednesday, and Chester, they do it a month in advance, which I think, eh, eh, with lots of changes, she told me. And that's where, to me, like, when we, if we go to, you know, if we go further out, it kinda gets confusing when Justice got to set and revise agendas ten times, and I'm like, which agenda are we doing now? You know, so it minimizes...
I don't have any, I have things to do, I have to move objectives.
And it happens, but it's not happening, you know, like, you may come to use that.
So I am not one to like to add any, any, the village clerk at the time, I've been in Justice, and I was that I am not big on adding things because there always comes the clauses, oh, look at that, they're trying to sneak something in, and it could be something missing to you, like, or, oh, they're not paying our sneakers. But I just not that, so what I tried to do is, like I said, forty-eight hours, I think is the least amount of time I've ever given the board. I mean, it's these first two agendas that have been forty-eight hours.
It's been eighteen hours.
So normally, you have a big nothing, uh, it all stands on my schedule, and I can sit down with Jessica and tackle all her, uh, agendas as well, so, all right.
Yeah, I don't remember having any kind of issues lead up to meetings. Every afternoon will get on a Friday before Thursday, meanwhile, I think, so, I think forty-eight hours is plenty, but... If there's any good questions, there's no...
I have, uh, anything else?
I have one more motion.
Okay, good.
Uh, to go into executive session for purposes of potential litigation, attorney discussion, sort of, probably also law. Uh, one oh five A, session to be scheduled during the...
I, I've never done any executive session since I've been mayor, I'm a member of Mr. Queen and Everdillian Executive Session, and we can, you know, the board of general clients.
Well, there, there's two different types, an attorney client, there's an executive session. It, um, I'm not aware of any... Specific topic of this one, I think that there's going to be action taken after the executive session. If not, it may be better to wait until the end of the meeting, at the rest of the board give your comments, and then go into executive session with the intent, the intent to not take any further action when you come out. That way, there's no action proposed, and you go home. Um, they don't have to sit and wait... Wait for you then to come out of executive session, and this is due, but again, um, if there's a second, and you do go into executive session for the purposes of potential litigation, uh, which is needed to step out, we're gonna talk some more. It's, the executive session is not for attorney advice, that's the separation for attorney client.
But certainly, I can give you a house in the executive.
My, my motion would, would be to, after comments by the board, that's all, executive session is the last...
Okay, so we'll just hold back on that motion, and once you guys have gotten a little bit back.
Trustee Ferrari?
Okay, um, I wanna open my condolences again to, uh, that's always, uh, for those of our family who came in and asked me what you don't approve. I also wanna do a, um, a last call, if you're going to do, uh, Woodbury Community Surgery Nation Part Dance, which is coming up this Saturday at the altar. So if you're thinking about it, and you're hesitant, and you haven't pulled trigger on going, but you still have time to go, I highly recommend it, because I think it's gonna be a great time, I go every year. And just to remind you, over the years, Woodbury Community, Woodbury Community has raised over thirty thousand dollars for local horses to be sold, so I can keep that home. And then that's my comments, thank everybody for coming out, hopefully personally, you're...
All right, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Trustee Suriel?
Okay, first, I'd like to give a big thanks to the Monteverberry School Board for last night. They approved the New York State property tax extension for our volunteers for EMS and our fire department. Well observed, and happy that that went through. Um, Tara, Jimmy, I heard your comments, and what I wanna say to Jim and Matt is that if there's anything I can do, like, I noticed tonight, there was just an awkward silence after every motion. And, you know, I didn't want that to be perceived, and I'm not, but I was trying to give, you know, we try to spread, spread the level, right? And if there's anything I can do to make you more comfortable to take a lead and make a motion, because I feel like the two of you are very quiet, and it's facing me, Vic, and then Andrew joins in once in a while because there's this awkward silence. And I really kinda tried it a few times, just to let it go, and then it's, it almost, I almost feel embarrassed. So I was like, fine, I'm motioning, so if there's anything I can do to make you guys more comfortable to get some confidence to do that, please let me know. Um, I can also suggest that the abstracts, that you guys try to get involved with that, because like, I, I know Vic did, and I did the rest, we did all of them this time, but that will get you more familiar with what's going on here, with asking questions, get you some comfort level with the staff that we have here, and I think getting involved with that, like, I have no qualms doing it. Um, we used to do it kind of as a tag team, between Tara, CJ, and I, but then, um, we all did it, we all took a piece of it. Um, but now I feel like it's just Vic and I, and that's, I have, I am an accountant, so that's kind of my, my jam, but please feel free to come in, I think it would be good for you guys to get some comfort level, maybe that would give you the confidence, and it would also probably help Jessica out, if Vic and I came on Friday morning because she needed to get bills paid, we came and did it. And then, again, today, I, I actually kind of waited not to do it, to see if, to give you guys the opportunity to. So if there's, you know, I would just encourage you to try to get involved along that standard. Um, and that's all I have, I hope, thanks everybody for coming.
So I, I just wanna know for the record, Trustee Suriel, because the woman is not like many others that like to recap themselves and get that. She commands the, the Monero Woodbury School Board, which I would like to commend as well, but she took the bull by the horns with this, and she saw it completely through, she was there with me last night. Um, yes, she's got a romantic attack at the temple with, with the president of the school board, but that, I would say, had nothing to do with this approval. She, he had an idea, and I'm like, that's... So, this was something we talked about, we, there are also ways to, to show your appreciation for your first response. Because it's not a meeting, okay, and they all waking up at all hours in the night, and they're all running out to help our chairman, sit that old rounder down, and this, to me, was the biggest thing that we've been able to do for them. And it really, Trustee Suriel deserves all the credit, because like I said, she took it, she took the ball, she ran with it, and she scored. So that's important, she did her research, she prepared something, she submitted it, and then go, here we are. With something that I, as mayor, can be very proud that a trustee that I appointed took care of and handled it all. So I just wanna personally thank her, because she is not gonna pack herself on that. I think she deserves a hundred percent of the credit, so, thank you. And this is a round speech, so... Also, those, that, that's making me a roadrunner, that's heading wrong line.
I have some time to be safe. And then, please, we'll be very happy to...
I have...
Most of the year, a lot of this day to...
Yeah.
And it's just a, each piece more, I do.
Yeah, it's okay, nobody else can speak at any second.
Yeah, and Matt, you need to go, and we need to go, I mean, no, it's still going, we just can't see.
Okay, okay. That's where I was gonna do speech, yeah, right, there you go.
Gonna look at it, yeah.
All right, Trustee Farrow?
Um, first off, I'd like to thank you all for coming. Um, we may not agree on every single issue, but I appreciate the perspectives from all of you, and I take into account. Um, secondly, I'd like to offer my condolences once again to Jim's family, and, um, there's, words, words can't really, uh, describe that, that band, and once again, I'm very, very sorry, deep sorry. Um, I'd like to also give my well wishes to Stephen on his future endeavors, from the highway department, best wishes on whatever the future holds for him. And, um, oh, I'd like to encourage you to all, please, if you have the available funds for food set aside, the Alamo's Food Pantry is always in need of food every single week. Please reach out to them, donate, help people in need, thank you.
And then, Trustee Farrow? Jessica, you have anything? All right. My turn. First of all, I'd like to thank and welcome California tonight, thank you, to me here. Okay, there was still... I would say that there are, I also want to thank Congress, the money, and all who stood here today. Uh, I don't know how many people they had through the doors, but they weren't here, they were gracious. Um, yes, they thought of a way which happens to me a lot, as it won't be with it. You guys have no idea how many times people stop me, James, Jessica, I wouldn't have let that out.
Yeah, it's making me mad, but...
You guys, that's... So... As we begin the new year, there are gonna be certain several projects that I want to grant fruition. Uh, I've already worked, spoken to, or, I'm thinking on some of these that we talk about. Improvements to our club, improvements to the Warner Vista, um, I have spoken to a lot of mine out on the lake, so you're gonna get on that. My hope is to eventually find public access to them on Cornwall. And to develop that into something that would be a huge benefit, or the way things used to be here in Woodbury. People who go out to fish can spend the day up there. Uh, we've got a bar plan, we're gonna use for that. I definitely think it would be plus-plus for water, so that'll be something, once we get some of the invasive species that would be common, it is something we definitely... So, um, what's the matter? Go ahead, Eric.
No, it's everything up there, up there.
No, that's the mouse.
The mouse.
Yeah. Anyway, Valentine's Day is coming up, gentlemen. Okay, expect all of you to do something nice for your wives. Okay, if your wives tell me anything, or your boyfriend's telling me, or girlfriend's telling me, if you're gonna leave, they will come to me, and then I will come to your house.
And roses.
And I will throw down rose petals, if you're listening. Anyway, next meeting is seven forty-two seconds, I have, I have this meeting to be in that night. So I invite you all to come, and please bring your gear, all right? Oh, I know, nothing, everything but prun, okay? I mean, the prun wants to be for Trustee Suriel. So... Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here, all three.
Yeah.
That is good. Okay. I completely accept that Friday wanted to make a motion to go into executive session for purposes of discussion for public regation with the intent to take no action on the... This is great, that's...
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed, but I can be for one. All right. We're kicking you all out.
We'll be going live here, yeah.
Chat, everybody. Well, yeah, if you'd like to stay, but I'll have to see you on the floor.